Good afternoon, we're going to go ahead, the meeting is now called to order. We will stand with the implication, prayer will be read by Mayor Tyler. All about the pleasure of allegiance, if they're ready, we'll stand please.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, Lord, we are on that heels of Thanksgiving, we are reminded once again of how much we have to be thankful for, for our families, for our health, for this community, for all that you have done for us and given us. Lord, we want to say to you, thank you for who you are and what you've done. Fathers, we enter into this holiday season and we celebrate Christmas or others celebrate other holidays. Lord, I am mindful that this is, this season is Emmanuel, is the time God is with us. So, we thank you for this, this community, for this council. Lord, we want to honor you and all that is said and done here. We want to, we want to be a vessel used by you for the good of this community. So, I just pray and ask for your provision and for your blessing, for your wisdom and discernment as we make decisions to better the welfare for our community. Thank you, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Blood to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Bowling, here. Councilmember Spence.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Council President Simmons.
Here.
Madam President, we have all six councilmembers in attendance and therefore a quorum is present.
Thank you. On the agenda, we have moved, on the consent, we have moved item K to the regular agenda and it will become item D of the regular agenda. At this time, if we can get the approval of the agenda as we make.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bowling and a second by Councilwoman King. All with every motion. Okay. All in favor?
Six zero.
All right, at this time, we will have a message from Mayor Tyler.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. I will not rehash the SSUT issue again, I think we've covered that. But, but there are a couple of items far ahead in some of my comments that I just want to speak on. The tap grant for the sidewalks at UNA, that we are splitting the 20% match with the university. When you consider that, I want you to be mindful, as you approve it, of some of the upgrades that UNA has done in that Pine Street area around the stadium. There's about $1,097,000 they've spent on upgrading infrastructure such as storm pipes, upgrading an eight-inch clay sanitary line, repairing existing water lines, replacing transformers. They have almost $1.1 million in work that they've already done in this area. Of course, they've committed another $80,000 to, to expand the sidewalks. So, I would ask and hope that the council strongly considers approving the resolution for the tap grant with the University of North Alabama. Quick old business, I want to say, my recent trip looking for jobs went well. I'm going to compare this issue to a football game because we're in the South. Now, we needed to move the ball forward, if you would, one first down at a time. And the trip to Virginia was definitely a move for the ball forward. Another group continued on to Washington DC and was able to move the ball further down the field. I was neither the quarterback or the person who ran the ball, I was part of the team. And if, if this job effort, job recruitment effort is to come to fruition, it will be in fact a team effort. So, standby for news on this, hopefully in the near future. I, I want to say this, there's been some people who've asked questions about the paving program here, which is very important to all of us. The 2025 paving program, that money is not fully spent. The contractor pulled off of City of Florence roads to go to do work for the state, who's kind of a big brother to us, they have, those contracts are bigger than our contracts. So, as we move into next year, we won't be repaving in the winter, it has to be at a certain temperature. We still have 2025, the majority of 2025 money available, plus some 2026 money that we hope to be able to get passed with this new budget. The delay, this type of delay is the very reason that I'm working with our engineering and street department on the possibility of us buying our own equipment and hiring our own crew, if it, the money makes sense and is equivalent to what we're paying the contractors. So, we don't get, we don't get pushed to the, you know, to the curb while they go on to somebody else and then we have to wait on them. If we have our own crew and our own equipment, we can move forward with that. There's been some questions about the electricity outages recently and our electricity guys work very hard. There were three that happened over the Thanksgiving holiday. The first one was a truck that hit the power lines and it rattled the, the lines where it disrupted the insulators and they were able to trip and those had to be replaced. Nothing wrong with our system on that, truck actually hit it. Two other times, one in Heritage Village and the other was out in the county. You had a private property, a person on private property cutting down a tree. In both instances, a tree fell across power lines and killed power. So, the, the three times over the holiday weekend that power was lost, it was due to either a truck getting the power lines or in two instances, a, a member on private property was cutting down a tree into the power lines and cost everybody power and had those power outages there. Our guys at the electricity department are doing the very best they can with the tools and resources that they have. I want a quick update for this council also on the proposed budget. We're still working on it, we, we do need to have a finance committee within the next two weeks, a finance committee meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a budget ready to go on the 1216 agenda. I wouldn't say this is the one that I would, am, am most impressed by. It's time for police, the police department start buying police cars. It's time for people to start buying computers that no longer work and we need a budget passed very quickly. Last year, we had more than $1.5 million in excess healthcare claims that impacted our budget that we have to account for in this upcoming budget. In the upcoming budget, we do have to make provision to shore up our retirement fund. So, we have done a lot of work for the employees already, but we are still trying to find some money for a cost of living raise as well. If anybody on the council wants to take a look at the budget and has ideas on more cuts, not increases, because we've been through and cut a lot, let me know and we will certainly consider those, but we have looked where we could cut and are continuing to do that. This budget will be more than last year's, although we've cut most of the departments. Eleven of the departments from last year are at a budget reduction, have actually lessened their budget this year than had last year. We've cut quite a bit to try to make it. However, it is an increase over last year or will be, the proposed budget due to the anticipated health insurance increase and the fact that we needed to shore up our own retirement fund. So, expect some more information and we hope we can get a budget passed at the next council meeting and be able to put, get everybody the tools and resources they need to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Tyler. Do we have any reports of any department heads? Standing committees? If we don't have any public hearings. At this time, we'll have business from the floor pertaining to items on the consent on the regular agenda with a five-minute time limit. For some, you can come to the podium, state your name and address with a five-minute time limit. You can come now. Yep, my section's to the right.
Hello, my name is David Carson, I live in Florence, Alabama and I will announce my address, but I'll give my identification to, I guess, Robert Lee over here. Yeah, there's a lot of crazies on the internet, that's the reason why I do that. Okay, first of all, I know you can't really respond to me, but maybe I had not, did the post-board's appointments and stuff, did that get taken off? Yes. It's still on there? Okay, I'll like to address that, that was, I guess, that first. There were some concerns that, that were made by several people that maybe some of these boards were not properly advertised. Yeah, they're not, I didn't hear about them until today. You know, they're now on the city, you could post it on the City of Florence Facebook page. You know, you got like pictures advertising sandwiches, you could, you could post these board appointments. These are very important. These are very important. Yes, they're not, they're not paid, but there's a reason why these are not advertised. They want the same people on these boards, year after year after year. It's, it's like a hidden power structure underneath. I've dealt with some of these boards before. They're pretty comfortable in their seats. It would be nice if the word was actively put out there and more people could apply. I applied to one board and it was basically laughed off, but I'll do it again. And it'd be nice to get some fresh blood on these boards. All right, the other thing I want to address is, what's next here? Oh yeah, the regular agenda item B, the Pine Street stuff with the sidewalk. Our mayor mentioned that UNA will be paying 50% of what, of the 20% that, you know, us locals are will be paying towards this sidewalk. I clicked on the agenda item, it was a big thing, I didn't have time to read it before, you know, I'm dealing with cameras and stuff like that. I was just wondering if someone, maybe the mayor, could point to me in writing where it says that UNA is going to pay 50% of that 20%. I'd like to see that in writing because I don't trust UNA. All right, and as far as regular, business item number C, with Eugene Sachs, the Reverb Hotel and all that stuff. I really only got one thing to say about that. I mean, this is, this is a very long drawn out convoluted mess at the span from city to the county, state level stuff. All I got to say about that is, I was wondering, who do you have to be buddies with if you're a business owner or you don't want to pay your taxes? That's all I want to say about that. And the last thing I want to, I guess, it's now regular item, agenda item D as far as this lawsuit that's, that's going on. Yeah, it sounds like our mayor is, is looking to fight some state-level corruption. That's the gist of what I got out of that, maybe I could be proven wrong or right or whatever. So, I think it's good, I like fighting against corruption. And, but I think we have enough local corruption to focus on. You know, I think you just got here, maybe you could take a look at your backyard before you start looking, you know, on, at Montgomery and stuff. I know, it's, I think it's pretty obvious that you're going to be seeking higher office after this. You, maybe you're using Florence as a springboard for higher office and stuff. I would just like to say, maybe just pay more attention to what's going on here first. You know, maybe for your first term, check, you know, because we have plenty enough corruption around here to deal with. And then later on, if you want to kiss the whaling wall and seek higher office or whatever you want to do, you know, that's on you, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
I'm coming, I'm coming. Oh, wait a minute. I'm getting there, I have about five minutes. Michael White, 135 Irving Drive, Florence, Alabama. I want to give these to Mr. Lively so he can pass them out to y'all. And one of you are the lucky person that gets them in color. Everybody else gets them in black and white because my copier ran out of colored ink. Okay, what you are looking at is the handiwork of Mr. Eugene Sack. That's, that's Hearn Trailer Park, off Gretchen Road in Florence. Been there for years and years. Back when all this first started, I didn't agree with Michelle Eubanks on much of anything. I worked with her years ago at the Times Daily and I liked Michelle for the most part. Our personalities just didn't go along. But I always admired her because she would not support a slumlord. She called Eugene Sack a slumlord from day one. And I went out there one day and just took pictures for myself and I put them all, all 17 of my Facebook pages. They got a lot of traffic. A lot of people on the council then didn't like it, most of them are gone now, including Michelle. That's one of the things when I saw that Josh Bowling was sponsoring this, it really upset me because I don't think you're that kind of person, Josh. And this is almost a slap in her face to be sponsoring this and you in District Four and she was in District Four. Michelle was against this from day one. She would have nothing to do with it, she voted every one of them down, she didn't want anything to do with Eugene Sack and his slumlord because that's what he was. There's literally, there were children playing in carchage. Federal agencies could get involved and make raids out there, I'm sure. Because I believe those people that live out there live out there simply because they have to. They have no other place to, they can go. So, they live in filth and object poverty and in horrible conditions. I wouldn't let my dog live in houses like those people were living in. I drove around and took about 50 pictures, you just got a small sampling there. So, in honor of Michelle Eubanks, I'm presenting you with this so you can't say you didn't know. I know most of you are new on the council. It would be sort of like if you bought a real nice house and next door to you was an old rundown shack. And he thought, well, the guy that owns the real nice house owns that rundown shack too and he's going to let me have it for a bargain. And you say, well, okay, the city might give me some money to come through and fix up my rundown shack. That's kind of what this is like. And I've heard all this, oh, it's not going to cost the city a dime, it's not, I mean, that's been cried since day one. It first started out something like 70, 18 million dollars he wanted. Then he came back and wanted nine or 10. Then he came back, no, it's not going to cost you a dime, it's going to just be wonderful. I'm just going to get a percent on the taxes and everything's just going to be lovely and we're, I'm going to fix all this up with a Reverb Hotel from Hard Rock. That's another thing that was done. My good friend Shalonda from Shalonda Speaks did a lot of, she helped me out on this a lot. And she did a lot of investigating on this. The Reverb people only run one hotel in the whole country and that's in Atlanta. They went to several different cities trying to make deals, but they never came through. Talk to the people in Kalamazoo, Michigan, see how much they like them. I didn't even get time to go over the Pine Street mess, but, you know, it's a mess and y'all are going to do what you're going to do on Pine Street. Plus, I mean, I don't know how people in North Florence are going to be able to come downtown to the truth when they get through, but I'm sure my one minute's up, so Mr. Lively will tell me. That's just it, that's all I got, but thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? In the middle?
I think I got up there a little quicker than the white, the Hillary Simpson, 755 West Alabama Street. I'm saying this so Santa Claus won't miss me this time. I want him to know where I live at because I know he got some powerful gifts. Anyway, I let you out. Look, a lot of people, okay, let me say this. Okay, by Mayor Tyler. Anybody with good common sense that listened to this discussion a while ago and understand that he's moving this city forward won't hesitate and get this done. Resolution to approve authorization for the attorneys for the City of Florence to file a motion to intervene, you can read the rest of it. But a lot of people put him in, voted for him for mayor and they want to see him move this city forward. And anybody that tries to get in the way is getting in the way of progress. Also, I want to speak briefly on regular business, resolution to approve, and I approved that resolution by Mayor Tyler. Regular business B, resolution to approve a construction agreement for a transportation alternative. We're moving this city forward. Anybody that gets in the way of moving this city forward is not for this city. And y'all need to know this, you won't be here long standing in the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? To my left? Okay, Mr. Lively? You're with the consent agenda?
All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Florence City Council for reading and study, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request.
Thank you, during your motion to approve the consent agenda, is this?
Motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. King, second by Mr. Bowling, all in favor of the motion?
Six zero, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to do that.
Item A is a resolution to approve baseline specifications for wrecker services to participate in the City of Florence, Alabama wrecker rotation sponsored by Chief Mike Holt.
During your motion for immediate consideration?
Salute.
Second.
It's a motion by Mr. Spence, second by Ms. King, all in favor of the motion?
Six zero.
During your motion for the adoption?
To move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Bowling, any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Six zero, motion carries. Item B is a resolution to approve a construction agreement for a transportation alternatives program project for sidewalks along Pine Street from Irman Avenue to West Mattelou Street in the City of Florence, Alabama, between the City of Florence and the Alabama Department of Transportation, sponsored by Bill Batson.
During your motion for immediate consideration?
To move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Bowling, all in favor of the motion?
Six zero.
During your motion for the adoption?
Motion.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. King, second by Ms. Dixon, any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Six zero, motion carries. Item C is a resolution to approve First Amendment to Project Development Agreement between the City of Florence, Alabama and FOFQOZB1 LLC, sponsored by Councilmember Josh Bowling.
During your motion for immediate consideration?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowling, second by Mr. Hendricks, all in favor of the motion?
Five votes, four? One opposed?
One opposed?
Okay, that'll be carried over to the next meeting. Item, item D was moved from the consent agenda. It's a resolution to approve authorization for the cities, I'm sorry, authorization for the attorneys for the City of Florence to file a motion to intervene with the court on behalf of the city to join the plaintiffs in the SSUT lawsuit sponsored by Mayor Tyler.
During your motion for immediate consideration?
To move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Spence, all in favor of the motion?
Raise your hands if you get it, please. Are you consideration, for immediate consideration?
Yeah, immediate consideration.
Opposed? Okay. Motion fails, it'll be on the next meeting. And that's all I have, I'm not present.
Our board appointments. The tree commission. The tree commission. The tree commission was Michelle Hyde, Gabrielle.
Pudinon?
Okay, Pudinon and Jolene Patrick. These are the tree commissions. And for the, those were the three, three tree commissions, for the zoning adjustment, Jackson Reeves, Reeves and Samuel, the zoning, Sam Mashburn. Those were the ones that was, for the zoning adjustments. Those were the ones that was appointed for the zoning adjustments, that was appointed by the council. So, at this time, we have business from the public with a five-minute time limit. And we will start this time to my left. You'll come and state your name and your address, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Harvey, 127 Fair Street, Florence, Alabama. Mr. Lively, if you would pass these out to the six councilmembers. Sorry, Mayor Tyler, I didn't make a copy, but I think you should know this. Two things that I want to address. The first thing tonight, I need to address the serious dangerous pattern happening in our neighborhoods, the high-speed chases. Running through the residential streets where children, seniors walk and families are living in. First, I want the council to know, I have printed out a copy of the Alabama General Pursuit Standards and the Florence Police Department Pursuit Policies for you to review and I'm handing these out because the issue can no longer be ignored. Here's the facts. Alabama's pursuit guides are clear. Officers must weigh the dangers and continue to chase against any, against the needed to immediate capture of the suspect. Pursuits must stop when the risk in the public becomes greater than the need to catch someone at the right, at that right second. High-speed chases are populated or densely populated or residential areas are strongly discouraged when the offense is a non-violent or low-level offense. In the Alabama Pursuit Guide, it says that the only time that they should pursue or chase is when it's an assault, a murder, or robbery, or armed robbery, or a kidnapping. a chase is when it's an assault, uh, a murder, or robbery, or armed robbery, or kidnapping. And when they need to just think about and ease back off the pursuit is when there's a low misdemeanor offenses, drug offenses, um, you know, if you're pulling him over for a little sack of meth or a bag of weed, you, we can do this. We have flock cameras. That's what the flock cameras are for. They're for to register, to look at the, uh, the tags when y'all could go back and then y'all could go and look for the corporate or the person that's, uh, after. Uh, Florence Police Department Procedures also states, officers must constantly consider public safety, traffic conditions, and environment. They must stop their pursuit when it becomes too dangerous in the community. The reason why I bring this up is because last Sunday, on November the third, there was a white male who, uh, I guess he fled police. He went on a chase from Mobile Street up into the Culver Heights. And then he ran into the dead end fence. I don't know how far he went, but when I got down there and took pictures and everything, there were glass, um, in the road. There was a bumper from, I don't know if it was from the police car or if it was from his car. Also, I talked to people how he had ran up on the curb. That day was a pretty day. It was a sunny day. There were kids out there. There were people out. It was a nice day on November the third. What I'm asking the council is to review the public examination of leadership on how Florence Police has enforced its pursuit policy. A clear direction that the high-speed chase should not run through residential neighborhoods unless the suspect is an immediate violent threat. And a plan, and a better plan to communicate with these incidents that happens to the residential that's left scared. My second issue that I want to talk about, my favorite issue that y'all like to ignore, is the property. Council Mayor, listen, I have done my research. Huntsville right now has the strongest property ordinance in our state right now. If you don't believe me, go Google it and look it up. Also, Athens and Madison. The problems are in District One and they're also in District Three. But the streets that I want you to pay attention to in District One are Fed Street, Nant Street, Clearwater, College Terrace, Kenard Street, Cherokee Street, Camel Circle area, the North Side. And the North Side in general is just people not cleaning up their yards. What we need to do is we need to start taking accountability. Citizens are leaving their property unattended. It's time to take accountability. The city, uh, the city needs money, so let's start finding these people. It's not that hard. I'm not asking for a lot. I am sick of living across the street from abandonment. I see deers, I see skunks, I see everything. This is not fair. This would not go on in District Five, Six, or any of them. I'm asking you to go revise this ordinance and do something and start finding these people. Because I don't want to have to, to go to the news and have to put pictures on the internet. I don't want to have to do this. I'm asking and I'm pleading you. Just don't look at me, hear what I'm saying. And I'm not the only one in District One. This is, this, this property ordinance would help every district out here. And the city needs money, and so find these people. Do what you have to do. But we need to get something done. Because the, the house across the street from me is ridiculous. I am tired of living in, uh, episode of the living dead. And that's what it was like on the first, on, on District One. So please, look over my information that I gave you. Please, can I get some kind of answers back tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left? In the middle?
My name is Wendy King. I live in Colbert County, so my address is relevant. And that's not what we're talking about tonight.
Well, anybody that comes to the state, you still have to give your address.
Okay. Um, Osboro Junior High School. That's the address. Okay? So that's in Cherokee, Alabama. But that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. Where I live is...
That's the Bishop Bob.
Is that the Bishop Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, Row One was its original address. No box, just Row One. Um, what we're here to talk about, what I'm here to talk to you about, is number one, I'm going to invite you first. But on the tail end of that, I'm coming to solicit you for help, which means money. I don't want you to blame, and I don't want you to back up now, okay? Because I just left Muscle Shoals yesterday, and before I could make it out there, we had what we asked for. Now, you can say, well, it's in Colbert County, and that's Colbert County. But we didn't have a veteran blow their brains out last year. You did. And he killed his father as well. So we can't designate spaces. This affects us all. Well, what they're looking for, veterans, and I'm speaking on behalf of several of them tonight, okay? Matter of fact, I've got one out there that belongs to you tonight, works at NAL. We're not talking about things that'll be handled through the VA. We're talking about a place of respite and resources, a place of decompression, a place of reset. If none of those things are needed, well, then it's a place of camaraderie, decompression, okay? Unity, these connectivity, these are what is missing on the state part of the military. Okay? Now, I don't know what effect we're gonna have on the numbers, but I will tell you this. The VA's been in charge of those numbers, and all they've done is gone up. So I'm kinda not asking, I'm kinda insisting, unless you have an answer for me tonight of where you have right now available, so that we do not lose a veteran due to exposure. Now, that place has to be able to accommodate a service now. So if you have a place like that available right now, then I'll leave and I won't ask for your help. If you do not, and you haven't served, then I would suggest that this might be your opportunity, okay? I'm happy to host you out there. We will be open for our veterans, contractors, and those that have already committed on Pearl Harbor Day. Don't come in handy, okay? They're worth it. Mayor, you've been over the police department. I don't have to tell you how many of those veterans. Wouldn't it be nice if they could come up there and pick up a canoe or kayaks and fish and eat and just out for the day? And then lost involved, their honorable discharge, so they're taking in fresh produce and vegetables, meat year-round. These are the things. Equestrian therapy, the best dog training in southeast. These are not things that you're gonna handle with your VA. So I do invite you. I call her a lady because I don't think there's a man that can sustain what she has and still stand after a hundred years. But she's almost there. And let me say, there's not been one dollar of grant money, political money. A hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is where the ticker mark is. And it has been your finest neighbors, your finest businesses.
You have one minute.
That stepped up and said, veterans, I will. That's a lot of money for the cities to have done zero. Okay? So let's not fight about it. If you want to argue, I'm parked two blocks down. Hit me after the meeting, and I'll take you and show you where your displaced veterans are outside. Let's just be nice, and let's just get it done. That's part of moving forward. We don't have an answer. We never have. Let's make one. Let's make an answer. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle?
Everybody's sensible, seventy-five, Florence, Alabama. You know, it's something when everybody just got pet projects. But what we want is unity to move this city forward. Again, let me speak like I have before. We have a problem in District One and District Two with speeders, like my sister was saying. And it don't seem like nobody wants to do anything about it. When we approved UNA to establish their residence on the west side, it was agreed that speeders wouldn't be able to survive without fines, uh, law enforcement if they break the speed limits, because it's a neighborhood of people that's been living there for a long time. We're gonna have to, those speed bumps, uh, I guess, I don't know whether to call them speed bump or whatever, but it ain't stopping anybody. People run over them things just like they ain't there. You go in other neighborhoods, they got them big things, and you have to almost stop because they're, they'll tear your car up. But I don't know where we got them things from, but it ain't doing a bit of good. Uh, Mobile Street, and what she was saying, now, why you gonna chase a car down to a dead end? I mean, I don't know if anybody still got common sense, because we don't got real smart these days, so we, we, we conflicted in what we, uh, make decisions on. But the common sense. Why would you chase somebody down a dead end street? I mean, school has started, buses are going, children are, I mean, police oughta know better. We got to speak truth to power. And I know a lot of people are scared to do that, but I'm not. Anybody wrong, I'm gonna speak against them. If you're right, you're right. I don't care who you are. But we gonna have to do better. We gonna slow down this traffic coming through our neighborhoods, just like you wanna slow down in your neighborhood. You need to have some fine, you need to have somebody watching this traffic. I don't care if it's my brother or sister. If it's speeding, give him a ticket. If it's my mama, give her a ticket. It don't have to be white or black. If you wrong, you wrong. And I'm tired of having to pull off the road just because somebody right behind me won't slow down. We already had tragedy in our neighborhood. We don't, definitely don't want to worry about kids. So something need to be done. Somebody need to talk to the chief or police or something. I don't know. I, I can't get no, get no common sense out of myself. So somebody need to talk to, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? To my right?
Hello, my name is David Carson. I live in Florence. Um, again, it was during the work session or regular meeting, I can't remember which, um, it was, it was mentioned that, uh, I'm budget will most likely be come up, coming up for a vote this, this month. So, um, there's an item on that budget, the last I saw, um, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar, um, handout to, um, the State College of the University of North Alabama. Um, I'm assuming that's probably gonna be in that proposed budget. So, uh, I also want to speak, you know, let's get a little, get a little, um, ahead of it and speak on, on it right now. Not too much. I've already spoke on this to ad nauseam the last council, and anyone paying attention knows my stance on that. Um, it's pretty simple. If you want to, um, clear up five-hundred K for anything else the city might need, maybe don't hand it out to this rich college over here. Pretty freaking simple. But unfortunately, I think that college has completely infiltrated our local government. It'll be interested, interesting to see if we'll have, actually have a council that isn't owned by UNA to a certain degree. We'll see. Um, there might be someone steps up behind me and say, I love UNA. What we're gonna do without UNA, we're gonna fall apart. No, if we don't give them five-hundred K this year, they're not gonna pack up their bags and leave. Um, these public speaking sessions are interesting. This is not, most people don't know how to debate. The two way I know is one thing I don't know, most people don't know how to do a two-way debate. Our society really doesn't cater to that. These meetings really don't do that. I mean, it is what it is. Like, everyone speaks their turn. You're not allowed to talk. You get the guaranteed last word, which is the, the best position you could possibly have, is have the last word without a response. And anyone can kind of point, you know, come, come in after me and snipe me from the side after I speak, and I won't be able to respond to them. I'd like to say that anything I, I bring up here most often, particularly this UNA handout thing, I've, I've made an open challenge online for anyone to do a recorded video debate on, with me on this. And I've had some detractors, and they, they, and they refuse to do it. They don't want to do it that way, because then I would actually have to respond back. Listen, I'm not a genius. I'm a high school dropout. I'm sure some of these college-educated UNA bros could beat me in a debate about this, but you can't because it's not, it's not defensible. I have a few key points that'll shut down any kind of argument on it. So don't hand out money to that rich college. We're not a rich town. Okay? They're, they're doing fine. And they're not gonna pack up the bags and leave if they don't give them five-hundred K a year. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
I love UNA. What would this town be without UNA? Don't, UNA's gonna pack up their bags and leave. Okay. Uh, David would bring up that UNA five-hundred K thing, which is kind of weird. Uh, no one's ever really given me an exact on it. The last council, the best I could get out of it was, um, this is like payments on loan toward three million dollars that was pledged by the city council when they first came around in twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty. Yeah, it was twenty twenty. Um, toward the Computer Science and Mathematics Building that had been completed on the UNA campus in twenty nineteen. Um, there's no resolution to back it up. Nothing's showing. It can't be found anywhere. Uh, one of the council people, um, told me that when it first came before the council, he was new then. And he asked the president at the time, uh, what is this? And he said, don't worry about it. We've already passed it. Just say yes. So that's what he did. Anyway, we'll get into that on the next go-around, I'm sure. Um, by the way, Mike White, 135, Ervy Drive, Florence, Alabama. Um, I want to tie into, number one, Stephanie said, um, the speeding, I totally understand that. And then our part on dilapidation. Um, District One has got a lot of dilapidated, uh, buildings, uh, larger buildings too. One of them by Eugene Sack down near the corner of Dr. Hicks and, uh, Court Street. It's been sitting there empty for ten years. Uh, it's got broken windows. Uh, before that, when it was ran like a motel, a body was found murdered, stuffed up under a bed. Uh, some people want to call the mini mart over here Murder Mart. That was a murder motel. Uh, but we're gonna, we're gonna sponsor it being remodeled into a reverb and all this great stuff that, uh, the Sack, Mr. Sack is supposedly gonna do to it. No, he's not. Don't be fooled, people. And don't be fooled into, into spitting in the former council people's eyes. The idea, um, I don't understand why, uh, why Ms. Simmons didn't sponsor this. It's in her district? Um, if you're, everybody's gung ho to, how about Eugene Sack with his, uh, picking a post, purchase, uh... Then he's in your district, go for it. But I don't understand why Mr. Boeing had to step up or why any of the other council people would be asked to. But anyway, I mean, getting either here or there. The other thing that I had to say was kinda ties into what the rev said and what Stephanie said, both. And that's speeding by UNA kids going to their apartment building down there on the west side that I think's not really owned by the university, it's kind of a private-public partnership. I don't know what it is. But here's the deal on the Pine Street thing. Y'all are gonna turn around and close down one of the only north-south ways of people who live out in places like Forest Hill, Sherwood Forest, Alexander Heights, District Five, some in District Four, some in District Six, have of getting downtown. We've only got Wood Avenue and Pine Street as it is. Okay, and years ago, there was a proposal made to put ramps going over Pine Street so UNA kids could walk over the ramps and put up gates on each side so they wouldn't walk out into traffic. Big studies were done, big dollars were paid for it. You know what came back? The kids wouldn't use it, and we would just be wasting money putting up the ramps because the kids wouldn't use it. They would crawl the gates, they would get, you know, and so, who knows? But it's too far gone now, especially now they're building that shoebox stadium down there. I mean, so it's already a done deal. But the city is a partner with UNA, not UNA is overlord of the city. Simple as that. And I graduated from UNA. So I do love UNA. But anyway, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Katie Palmer, District Four, Florence. I drove yesterday...
Please give your address.
1630 Decatur Avenue. Can you pull the mic down? That would be up. I drove home late yesterday afternoon, evening, and it was raining. And the visibility was very poor. I drove from Robinson all the way to Hermitage on Hilton. And between the rain, the dark asphalt that they used this year, whatever, and opposite traffic headlights, and like I said, the visibility was very poor. Can we possibly add to the budget, paving project for next year, resurfacing, whatever you call it, installing reflectors on our major thoroughfare like Florence Boulevard, Hilton, I think, no, Cops Creek has it. But anyway, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Okay? At this time, we will have councilmen report our reports with a five-minute time limit, starting with Ms. Dixon.
Yeah, okay, I have a couple things. First of all, Mayor Tyler, I really appreciate all the backwork you've done on the SSUT taxes. And I want to make it very clear that my vote was not because I don't agree with everything that you have said, I think, and all the research you presented. All of that money does need to come back to our city. I agree with that 100%. What I am unsure of at this point, and the reason why I voted, why I did, is because I am unsure more about joining a lawsuit at this point. I would like to see if there's other avenues that we can... Just if there's other avenues that we can take to maybe come up with a better idea, maybe go through a legislative process and just kind of look at it a little bit deeper. So please know that my vote was not at all against our school systems, it was not against our city. We need that money, our schools need that money. I 100% agree with that. So I just want to see if there's other avenues that we can pursue and look a little bit further and deeper into that lawsuit before we actually join it. So that was my vote there. The other thing is, we talked about in our work session, I'm just gonna say it again for those that maybe weren't a part of the work session, about the boards. We voted in some boards today, members for some vacancies on boards. Those boards are available to the public, to everyone to apply for. And all you have to do is you need to go onto the city website, and it will list all the boards that we have as a city and what each board does, gives you a little description. And then all you do is if you go on there, and I would encourage our city to do that, to our community to go on there and see if there's any boards that spark your interest. And if so, please apply for those boards. And your application will stay available indefinitely, so when a position comes available, you will automatically be put in the pool for that. I would love to see our districts across the city represented on all the boards. That is what I would love to see, and I think we decided as a council up here that we'll do a better job of making sure those are advertised through our districts so that people can be aware of that. So just please take a minute, go on the city website, look those over, and consider serving when the time comes available. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Thank you for everyone being here today, and thank you for those who came up to the microphone. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, a lot of time with family and friends, and great food. And I hope that was very enjoyable for everybody. I do wanna speak with what the mayor talked about with the power outages because two of those outages were involved District Four and District Six. I did speak with Mary also with the insulators. I believe, but I think on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, the insulators actually broke. I think they were cracked initially, maybe with the truck hitting it and with the amount of weight, the cold, they actually broke. They have those fixed. Hopefully, we will not have that problem again because it was the same areas both times. Hopefully, that won't be an issue anymore. So hopefully, that is fixed. Mr. Carson, I agree with board appointments being on Facebook. I've never seen it, if it's on there, I've never seen it. But I think that's a great idea, we actually post job openings on Facebook. So I think that's a great idea, put that on Facebook, get it out there a little bit more. Nobody looks online, everybody looks on Facebook. So I do agree with that. I would like to bring up, I didn't get a chance to speak on this, but with the SSUT, my vote was gonna be no because I felt like I agree with Ms. Dixon, the lawsuit, I did not like that word. I do agree that the system is flawed, I agree with that. But I also feel like we need to let the legislative process do its job. I think this was created in actually 2014. Before that point, nobody got anything. So they created it in 2014, they made an amendment in 2018. I just feel like, let's let the legislative process do their job. But I do, I respect all the work that you put into it and all the information that you gave us. But that one word is really, I don't like that. I don't want our, I did not want the city of Florence's name on a lawsuit because I don't want that to affect us down the road when we do go to the state. So I feel like that was very important. I would like to speak a little bit on the resolution that I sponsored. That sponsorship had nothing to do with Herne Trailer Park. I do hope to address that at some point. I'm a month in, so there's been quite a bit, and Herne Trailer Park's in my district. From my understanding, many of the residents there own their own trailers. So that, again, we need to figure it out. I need more information, I need to research more. But I do, but it does not have anything to do with my sponsorship of giving an eight-month extension to the Reverb Hotel. I said I would sponsor it because it was a, it's a construction issue. With the delay, that causes everything to get pushed back. And in the construction world, you don't have equipment, you don't have your people just sitting there waiting for seven months for go because it doesn't happen that way. You don't make money that way. You have to get people working on other jobs. If bothers a delay, you gotta have that money work coming in in other projects. So to give him an eight-month extension, I was happy to do that because I do wanna see that hotel there. I think it will bring a lot to the city of Florence, so I was willing to do that. I feel like that is, that could be a very good thing, bring 200 jobs in. I mean, they don't all have to be manufacturing jobs when we bring jobs in, they can be anything. So that's why I sponsored it, it was a construction decision to give him an extra eight months. I'm looking through my notes. I agree, reflectors need to be added. But I feel like a lot of these places that we're talking about is state roads, if I understand that correctly. So we can make a request to the state to get that done. And also, ordinances are outdated, I agree. And I feel like they are working on it very hard to update a lot of ordinances, building codes, all that within the city. So they are working on that very, very hard. Last thing I would like to say is, the Marshall Panther football team is playing in the 3A state championship Thursday at 11:00 a.m. in Protective Stadium in Birmingham, Alabama. They're representing the city of Florence, I think it's a great thing. They are actually competing for their, for a back-to-back state championship. So if you can't join everybody in that trip to Birmingham, you can listen to it on 94.9 The Bull. You might hear a familiar voice on there, I might be on there, I may not. So please, support our team. They are in the city, and those guys and Coach Higgins there worked really, really hard, and they have represented this city well. They actually were able to have all four playoff rounds held in Florence. So that's, that was pretty cool to see happen. So thank you, everybody, for being here, and I'm done now.
Sure.
I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
I'd have seconded on that, I bet that.
You just use your phone, maybe do your time.
Okay. Just thanking everyone for their attendance tonight and getting up and making the comments that you made for our city, that's what we want as a council. We want representation from our, from our community and people talking. And to those who are watching on YouTube, we appreciate your, you know, you looking in and watching and what's happening in our city. So, you know, we wanna continue to encourage that. We want to encourage our community to get involved, to be engaged, to have those comments or whatever, you know, you wanna bring before us. I actually wanna mention the pet license again, I will continue to bring that up and ask you probably in the future continuously. Also, I wanna let everybody know in District Five that we will be having a community meeting in the first of the year. That's my plans. If you see different, please reach out to me. You have my email, my phone number. I've had a lot of comment, I mean, people reach out to me, and I've actually talked to some people today. So I wanna encourage that. Please continue to reach out to me for things that you see that, you know, District Five can do or look at or whatever. I would appreciate that. I wanna second what Katrina, President Simmons, has asked us to do as a board, I mean, as a council, is to really encourage our, our community to get involved with these boards. We want people to be involved again and engage, but, you know, you have to take that step to make that happen. And, you know, we wanna encourage that, we want representation across the city. Also, there will be probably, it's not definite, public safety meeting this week. Wanna make everybody aware of that, I'm the chair of that. So you will see a posting of that, for that. And again, for the SSUT, I was not in agreement with that as well, I was going to vote no. But I really appreciate your homework, you did a lot of work on that. And I also did some work on that myself, and talked to people throughout our community and state. And just, you know, wanted people to know that I did some homework on that as well. So thank you again for being here, and we appreciate and value our city employees for what they do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Hello, everyone, I'm glad to be here tonight, and I'm glad for all the people that are here as well and watching at home. Everybody's pretty much said everything that I feel like I need to say at this point. And like Ms. Dixon said, Mr. Tyler, this has nothing to do with you specifically, but there's been so much information, and I feel like that we still need to know a little bit more. This lawsuit is scary, you know, taking that, you know, to the state and doing that. Is that something that we may not get anything from? Is that something that, you know, we may regret? And that's just kind of where I'm at, you know, thinking that, you know, it's better to just kind of say no at this point and maybe kind of figure it out. We need to change that by the end of the week. I know there's a deadline, and I'm still concerned. So appreciate everyone again for being here tonight. As far as the hotel, the vote that I made tonight was based on many, many months of coming to city council meetings, of being out and campaigning. I had a lot of people ask me about the hotel, a lot of concerns. So I felt tonight that's what I needed to vote. And so I'm here to not vote necessarily what I want, but what I feel the citizens want for me to do. So thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Hendricks?
Well, as always, thanks to everyone that's here tonight. Made the effort in the cold, saw a lot of folks shivering out in the audience tonight. It was pretty chilly in here. Also, those that are watching and will watch. Couple updates on some of the comments. Ms. Harvey, what we're waiting on, from what I understand, the holdup on the blight right now, because I've worked pretty hard on that the past year when I chaired the Building and Planning Committee, is we've got to put in place a board of appeals so that when they go out and create a citation on a property, they have an appeals process. Currently, that doesn't exist. Our interim Building Department Director made me aware of that at a neighborhood meeting, and he is working diligently to get that in place so that we can take it to the next level. I'm as passionate about that as you are. On the reflectors, I've been watching that project out on Cops Creek. They're still doing the striping in the turn lanes and the arrows and those things. And I think reflectors are typically one of the last things that go out in place. So I think those will be coming soon, just a guess. But from my observation, I think that's what's gonna happen. I too wanna thank the electricity department. I got some calls on Friday morning, you know, a lot of folks had guests in. Wonder if they need to send them to hotels, what was going on. They did have a little trouble in the dark and in the fog because like with those insulators, the lines didn't pop. So really, in the dark, they couldn't tell where the problem was. But they did a really, really good job of, once they isolated the problems, of getting some power rerouted. And I always think of those guys, you know, there are a lot of people probably hunting on that Friday morning. I wasn't, I was in my pajamas watching the parade, but I was comfortable. And they were out there climbing poles. I always like to thank the electricity department for doing that for us and getting our power back on. Appreciate the budget update, it drives me crazy up here to vote on these things when we don't actually have a budget in place, it's just not how I do things. So I look forward to getting that to us and getting it passed. And I think I may be your lone vote on the SSUT, but I did attend the session in Tuscaloosa a few months back. It's not like the city of Florence is suing, we're joining a much broader lawsuit just to force this to happen. I talked with some of our legislators today about it, told them I was gonna support you. They understood the position. I don't, you know, can't speak for them, but I do feel that they know the spot we're in. So anyway, hopefully, we can do something on that at a later date. Uh, so anyway, hopefully, we can do something on that at a later day. Update on the fencing outside. I checked with engineering today. Uh, they're finishing up the concrete. They're finishing up, uh, the, the, the asphalt work so that they get the fence removed. From what I was told, the fence probably will be gone, uh, by early next week. And then at some point, paving crews will come in and do some, some, some paving. But the streets, uh, it'll be temporary closures like any normal paving project. So we'll get the fences gone and the streets open for the, for the remainder of the, uh, shopping holidays. Uh, a couple of fun things that I want, uh, finish with. Uh, wanna remind everyone, uh, lighting of the park is Saturday night at 5:00. Really, really a fun event. And I got to do it for the first time, uh, last year. I think the Marshall Choir is singing, uh, this year. Uh, that's followed by the, the, the bike parade that the library puts on. Uh, and then that's followed by the symphonies, uh, Christmas concert at 7:00. So a lot going on in District two on Saturday night. And then I, um, will end with reminding everyone of next week, uh, Christmas parade next Thursday night, 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, wanna thank everybody for being here, and I hope that everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving with your family and your friends. I pray that everybody will have a happy and a safe holiday season as you are getting into the holiday spirit. Ms. Harvey, thank you for being here and coming here and sharing your passion. I totally agree with you. I've been fighting this fight about the blight ever since 2016, since I took office. And I agree with you so much. And some of those same streets, I have been sharing with every mayor that have sit here, including our current mayor. And he has assured, uh, even on the campaign trail, you have heard him, that you've been in the same, uh, place as we were on the campaign trail, that he said he's gonna help us fight the good fight. And I just happen to believe him. So he knows it, and it's just gonna take time for him to get his feet wet. We are 1-1 month in as of tomorrow, um, to give him an opportunity to help us, uh, get there. So we're gonna hook you to that, Mayor Tyler. Right, right. Um, so just give us an opportunity to get our budget passed and to get able to, uh, get someone in. The, the building department is still, he's an interim, right? He's still interim to get, able to get us to, to where we need to be, to help get those things in place, to try to help that. I agree, they totally need to be fine. And I think they need to be fine to the max, because it has lingered just a little bit too long for us, that our community, um, have looked like that. I agree, District one and District three looks the worst. But it's a citywide, uh, problem. But District one and District three certainly looks the worst, and we shouldn't look like that. I'm gonna use Mayor Tyler's, it's a place that we should certainly live, work, play, and worship. And so we deserve better. The whole city at large deserves better. So, um, and I think that we're gonna get there. It's gonna take some time, because it took some time for it to look like that. That didn't, that district looking like that, it didn't happen overnight. It took years for it to get like that. And everybody who lives on those streets should be held accountable to the max. And so I'm gonna push, uh, with you, uh, with the district, with the community, to be held like that. And the speeding issues, they need to be held accountable too. And those little flat things, those runners, they don't work. And I've even sent pictures of some that I've seen in other cities in different parts of the city. I think, agree with you, Reverend Simpson, need to be their little concrete ones. It'll tear frame off of a car. I don't want nobody's car to be tore up, but the little flat ones, they don't work. And I know Mr. Baxter is not a, not a, a, he's not a fan of them, but something's gotta give. And I do recall the chase that happened. And I ain't gonna say, I kinda wasn't behind him for a little bit there. Then I ran off to the right side. But anyway, that chase was a, a bit much, um, where it happened. Somebody could have gotten hurt. But, um, something has got to, to happen on those high-speed chases. And this what you gave, give us, I will make sure that Chief Holt gets, get a copy of this as well, so he can see your concerns as well on this right here. So that's all I have tonight. And I wanna thank again everybody for coming, um, out tonight, sharing your concerns, sharing your passion. Again, I challenge the council in regards to the boards, um, keep pushing, pushing the worry out. Everybody get engaged in your city government, um, your local politics. This is where y'all start. Just be encouraged. Stay engaged. Get involved. Sign up for some boards. Call us when you have concerns. District one, call me when you have concerns. You share ideas. Don't wait till a community meeting. I'll be having one in the first quarter. It's a little bit too cold right now, but don't wait till a community meeting. Call me now as you see concerns and issues, uh, that arise. So if all been said, we're gonna ask for the lender if he'll come and give us a closing prayer. I'm sorry. Do you have anything that you wanna say? Okay, Brother Lender, if you're coming close to us, I'll do prayer. I would appreciate it. Everybody will stand, please.
Ms. Frey? Father, you are good, and we thank you for the city that you have provided us to live in. And I thank you, and I'm reminded of your word that says that every governing authority is appointed by you. So I thank you for the, the leaders of this community, for we know they are appointed by you, that your sovereign hand has put them in that seat. And we ask that your wisdom would prevail, that you would visit them in their prayer time, that you would give them wisdom from the throne room. Lord, we thank you for the celebration of life and Thanksgiving that we just came from. And we thank you for the celebration that we will share together as a community on December 25th, when we recognize the birth of the Savior. We thank you for Jesus, God, and thank you so much for sending your son, that we might have life. And we'll be careful to give y'all praise and honor and glory as we go into 2026, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.